The time for convening has arrived. Before we start this evening's work session, I want to explain the absence of our Chief of Police. The U.S. Attorney General has flown in from Washington, D.C. to honor our Police Department for the largest fentanyl bust in the history of Georgia. She flew in today just to thank him and our team and the Deputy Chiefs here tonight. So, you know, it was, and it was all done by our Police Department. The tips, everything else that was done, they brought the DEA in to ensure that it was a federal prosecution, but our team did a great job and he is there representing our Police Department. And it was quite an honor to have the Attorney General fly down for that specific purpose tonight. So that explains his absence and I can't think of a better place for him to be in getting that recognition for our team. All right, we'll start tonight. Item one is the update from Arts Sandy Springs. Ms. Morris, if you'll come forward.
Back again, like a bad penny. Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your attention. I'm Sheri Morris, Head of Public Art Initiatives for Arts Sandy Springs. I'm joined tonight by a stellar group from our board. We focus on making sure we are populated with design professionals. And we have Garmuze, Architect David Lester, who's, life has been in design, in the real estate side. Dot's Colley, you don't know yet, but Dot is, Dot's is with Cooper Carey and she's an Associate Principal and she is an interior specialist, so she will head up one of the programs we want to talk with you about tonight, should we be so fortunate that you funded.
Can you move in front of the microphone so we can hear you?
Oh, you can't hear me?
Yes.
Oh, that was so good. Okay. A couple of non-designers, our Treasurer Nick Quintana, International Banker, retired, and Christopher Thurman, an attorney who will be our Governance Chair, I believe. So, and there are also some other ladies from society that we will recognize at that part of the presentation. Where's the advancer? Yes. Our initiatives, just to go very quickly over them, are, you well know the Abernathy Art Center. We took that over a couple of years ago on a contract with the city. We run it at about 90% occupancy and we squeak through with about one penny left at the end of every year. So we are looking forward to the additional classrooms that we're very grateful that you're providing and that will kind of get us some breathing room and be able to serve the citizens of Sandy Springs with some things that we can't offer inside the building. The City Gallery, we know you know that well, we see you there often, we hope to see you tomorrow night for a wonderful show that we just hung there. Arts in the Open is a program, it's a broad program that focuses on art in public places and it includes Gifts for the City and what the annual sculpture competition called the Annual Arts Walk and some other things. So far, it has resulted in 18 gifts of sculpture to the city and the city has purchased 20 pieces. So a good, a good collection. Capital City Projects, City Capital Projects, we completed the Veterans Memorial Sculpture with leadership from a couple of very esteemed veteran city council, veterans who are also veteran city council persons. And we are now working with the Old Riverside Park Natural Playground. We came to the city and suggested that instead of a purchased playground, one be done that is more organic and ties to the environment and we have really enjoyed our relationship with your Parks Department leaders on that. And we will talk today about converting the Annual Arts Walk into the City Springs Collection. City Capital Projects, you guys adopted in 2019, I'm sorry, in 2020, the Art in Public Places Plan that is intended to manage all the art in the city's open areas, the public realm. And there are three projects, in that, we work with your staff each year to, for them to help identify, bring us into upcoming capital projects so we can be involved in the planning, make sure that if there can be public art, accommodation is made, finding opportunities for that public art, getting it in the capital budgets. There are three projects going forward, Mount Vernon Highway, Path 400, Hammond Drive Widening. So we want to be getting with staff, we're a little late on those because we did not meet in January and so we want to get involved in those and see where we can incorporate public art. Even if we just get the planning done and it can't be funded in year one and we could come back and do the art another time, at least we would have any easements in place, any electrical conduits, things of that nature that might be needed. You asked us last year, or this budget year, to transition from the Annual Arts Walk, the Sculpture Competition, to what we call the City Springs Collection. City Springs Collection was named several years ago and has yet to be populated with any permanent art, but you ask us to turn our attention to that and we are tonight asking, want to bring you up to date on that and talk about the funding for it and what we can do. The purpose, our purpose is to identify the portions of the city's March 29 City Springs Master Art Plan. That's not the Art in Public Places Plan, it's a plan for this building that was done a few years ago. And decide, and help work through what we do in Phase One, what we do what year, because it's a, it's a large plan. The implementation plan is to curate and procure art, fine art, for the public spaces, the lobby level and the third floor. And then to also, we have a Gifts for the City program and again, there have been 18 sculptures given either by Arts Sandy Springs or we've facilitated it. And we would convert that to where we are soliciting people, working artists, to donate a piece, people who might be downsizing their home. It's really hard to get, I mean, you hate to just take your art you've loved all your life to Goodwill. And so we think there's a good opportunity there for people's offices and department conference rooms and things of that nature. So, because you, you can either curate fine art or you can accept donations, it's really kind of hard to curate donations into an exhibit. So that was, the public spaces will be purchased. I keep hitting the microphone. In the public art plan, the concepts are to relate to enhance the architect's concept for the building, to reinforce the identity of the City Springs complex, engage the community in a visual arts dialogue, celebrate the Chattahoochee River within the city with visual metaphors for water, nature and natural materials, and deploy colors that include blues, greens and other natural tones. The art procurement process that we see, again, we are, we are on contract with the city to be your purchaser, your procurer of art, curator and procurer of art. Been on contract for several years now. Each year, we will work on a different area based on that year's budget and determine can, you know, are there two conference rooms we can do, can we do a whole upper level The donated art, and I already went over this a little bit, we'll manage in concert with your staff, programs to ask people about donating art. And you have guidelines for already, there's a gift policy that we already use for benches and sculpture and things of that nature. So all the, everything's in place, it's just time to implement the plan and to use the funding that we were spending on the outdoor sculptures to spend inside the building, as you asked us to do. Lobby level, there is, it's been determined to use that as a rotating gallery and that's working very well, but there's also what we've called for some years, the City Hall Feature Wall. And we were going to do that program, the call for entries was out and the pandemic happened and we had to, had to pull the program. We had already gotten some submissions. That is, that we think will be a one-year project, whether you choose to do it in this next year or whenever you do it, that'll be kind of what the budget would accommodate. It's a big wall. The wall is 24 wide, 25 high, there's a technical drawing sort of on the right. And we have been chatting with, you know, we're connected to the, to the high-end working artists in Atlanta, in the Atlanta metro area. We talked to sculptors, collage artists, fiber artists, painters and mural artists to get some pricing guidance, like, okay, what's, what would it take to do a wonderful job on this wall? And I will come back to that in a moment. Third floor conference level, there are 29 pieces contemplated in the plan and that would be a one or two-year budget allocation, we think, to do those. You can see that, that we could go into a conference room and have pieces that make sense together in that conference room, do something else out in the hallway, but wherever you go, it will be a curated collection. I won't bore you with all this, but we, the size of the pieces of art in every room have been worked out as a minimum. You could do some bigger than this, but you wouldn't want dinky little paintings or sculptures on your wall. Your art plan has representative images of the kinds of media that could be used. Metal sculptures, all right, I'll just say wall sculptures. So that's a metal piece. The one on the left here is a metal piece and the one on the right is wood and mixed media, glass sculpture. There's one place that we disagree with the plan. All the paintings in the plan are considered this very hard-edged, abstract, non-representational work. And that's fine, there's a place for that. We think you and your citizens who visit City Hall will relate better to things that are a little softer and things that have a subject matter. So we recommend that there are representative images from abstract to more realistic. So, and that they celebrate the wonderful things about Sandy Springs. So here are a couple of pretty abstract images of a river. This is contemporary realism of the river. We can use paintings to celebrate the forests, the trees, not all of our trees are in forests, some are in yards, the wildlife, the lifestyle, both in the wonderful recreation areas you have created and green spaces for your citizens and also the performing arts and the fun jams that are, that are enjoyed here at City Springs. So that is one area that we're asking for leeway to move away from hard-edged, abstract to more representational, relatable pieces. We think you'll agree with that because we know y'all. And the gardens, as Sandy Springs has gorgeous gardens. So, Phase One Budget, the pricing guidance we got from all of the artists we talked to is, in the, in the plan, in your plan, it says the piece on that wall can be no smaller than 12 by 16. We all, we think it could be bigger and maybe should be bigger. So we got pricing of $60,000 to $150,000 for, again, that includes paintings, fibers, sculptures, mural, whatever. And for either an 18 by 18 or a full 24 by 25, we got prices for 75 to 220. That's just because y'all ask us, in, because we've talked to some of y'all and you said, what's it going to cost? Well, what's a car going to cost? But that's the range. Good, all of this would be good, there's no learning, emerging artists in this. Interior art for the third floor public areas, we project about $3,000 on average for a piece, we may find a great piece for 1,500, may have to pay 7,000 for another one. So again, to finish up that third floor would be sort of $90,000 and then donations of art would be free, other than the operating budget would need to pay to hang them. We right now have $25,000 left in this year's budget because the sculpture program was stopped and that would transfer. And if you allocate 60,000 next year, which is what's always been allocated for the sculpture, that gives us 85,000 going into next year. This is not like a bridge designer or something where we can say to you, this is what it's going to cost, you please approve this cost. We are asking you to continue your budgeting of the public art and then we will work with you to say, do you want to do the City Hall Feature Wall first? Do you want to do the third floor first? How should we approach this? And Councilman Paulson and DeGiulio can reflect to y'all how we, how we work and figure it out, you know, together, right? You don't agree, John? So again, it's not, we're not asking for a budget vote, we are asking for the continued budgeting. We have, one of the things Arts Sandy Springs does is works, work with the other civic groups whenever we can, when somebody has a cool idea. And Sandy Springs Society has had a very cool idea and Laura Jones, my friend, came to me one day and we, Deena is going to talk with you about a short-term program, just because we both landed on the same agenda, we put it together, and then I'll come back for any discussion and questions.
Hello, I'm Deena Chumney, I'm the Executive Director of Arts Sandy Springs and also the Abernathy Art Center. So I wear two hats, but today I'm going to talk about, am I going to do this right? Let's see. There we go. The 20th Anniversary Turtle Walk, oh, sorry, Chumney, C-H-U-M-N-E-Y. Looks like chimney but with a U. Sure. All right, so we're talking about the Turtle Walk, it's a joint project between Arts Sandy Springs and the Sandy Springs Society. We are proposing to create this display of Sandy Springs Town Turtles on City Green, which would commemorate both the 20th Anniversary of the city and the fundraising project. Just to give you guys a little history, I know everyone is familiar with the Town Turtles, but as a Sandy Springs native, I remember very clearly back in 2004, when this project started by the Sandy Springs Society. They organized this public art exhibit of 75 turtles that were designed from a drawing by Sandy Springs artist Jack Elrod, who created the Mark Trail Comic Strip. And they were crafted by the Cow Painters of Chicago, who created the original cow sculpture display in Chicago. They were, it was chosen to represent the Eastern Box Turtle, which has a great big broad back that the Sandy Springs Society thought would be great for a canvas. It also is indigenous to the area and known for its longevity and as a nod to the grassroots effort of the new city formation that took quite some time, it's slow and steady wins the race. So it was representative of the city in many ways. There was a parade of these turtles. There was also, they were also displayed at the Sandy Springs Festival. They then were displayed various places around the city and then auctioned off to individuals in business and raised $750,000 for the newly formed city. And those funds were used in many ways. One was to purchase the parks from Fulton County for the city. They were also used to build the entertainment lawn at Heritage Sandy Springs and it also created the Sandy Springs Foundation. So they are an integral part of the history of Sandy Springs as it's, as a city. So we are proposing that this exhibit would be held from mid-June to early September this year. We're going to install about 10 turtle sculptures on the concrete bases previously used for the Arts Walk Sculpture Contest and some of the bases will be able to hold two turtles because they're larger. Mid-June through September, taking advantage of the crowds, the concerts, the festivals, special events, the farmers markets, lots of people gathering during the summer to see the turtles. Each sculpture signage would feature the turtle's name and then from the collection of the individual donor who is lending us their turtle for this display, as well as a QR code on the sign to link the 20th Anniversary webpage of the cities and a little bit of a history of the Sandy Springs Society project and the fundraising significance. Okay, so the good news is, is that we have donors from Arts Sandy Springs and the Sandy Springs Society and we are going to share the cost of installation and de-installation. This exhibit would be held in conjunction with the City Gallery Student Artwork Show that is titled, What Would Sandy Springs Look Like 20 Years in the Future? And this is going to be a kids' art show that would be curated from artwork that will be gathered from farmers market activities in May and in June from the Abernathy Art Center Summer Campers. And then an artist reception would highlight both exhibits. So it would be a nod to the past and looking toward the future. So if you have seen some of these turtles around town, some are in good shape and some maybe need a little bit of a touch-up, right? So we would only display privately owned sculptures that have either been restored or have been displayed indoors and are in pristine condition. We also have been working with artists to touch up some of the loan turtles so they'll look their very best on display. And these are just a few of the whimsical, wonderful turtles that not necessarily these will be on display, but just to sort of give you guys an idea of some ones in really So we're proposing to use bases one, two, four, five, seven, eight and nine, which are all vacant at the moment, on City Green and have a wonderful display. I'd like to also recognize Jan Paul and Jan Collins, the Jans, from Sandy Springs Society who have been really a joy to work with and I'm so fortunate to have them on the committee. That's all I got.
Okay. Do you have questions or comments about either the Arts Sandy Springs City Capital Projects Program or converting the sculpture program to the City Springs Collection inside the building?
Ms. Rochelle.
First, I want to thank you guys so much. I love seeing all the sculptures outside and I'm really excited about the art coming inside. I did have a couple of questions. One was about the donations. If we get something really grandiose and beautiful, can it be displayed in public or is it just?
Absolutely. It's not out of the question that somebody gifts a great, great piece and we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. We're not saying it all has to go in office, we're just saying generally, because there'll be, somebody might have a picture of a boat and somebody might have a picture of flowers and they're not the same style and so we have to, you know, move them around so they, they don't clash with each other.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I know there's some people in Sandy Springs that have beautiful art collections and we would be more than happy, like, be very lucky to get some of their pieces.
Generally, people with really, really fine people divest it through a divestiture company, but there's a lot of great pieces that people paid, you know, $1,500 for 25 years ago and they just can't use it anymore.
And then I want to ask you, you mentioned the playground. So I do hear a lot of complaints about, or several complaints over the years, about some of the playground equipment over at Abernathy Park, that it's really more maybe a piece of art and not necessarily something for kids to play on. Is this, how, what, how are you looking at the playground pieces for the Riverside Park?
Is Brent here? Okay, yeah.
No, it's not art, it's not supposed to be art, I'm saying, but I don't think, it's not kid-friendly.
It's fun little tunnels they crawl through. It is kid-friendly, we actually ended up, these things started over the years as wood, logs, but nowadays, and they became so popular, but logs ultimately disintegrate and they might have a splinter sticking out, whatever. So now there are companies that craft them out of composite materials so they look like logs, so they are designed as play for children. Now, this is a tot park, it's for two to five-year-olds with moms, it's not for the 12-year-old boys to go crazy on. So there is a little, there's a berming up a piece of the earth and then there's a wonderful slide that comes down it and there's a tunnel to climb through. There are big round swings hanging from what look like trees, they're very much designed as play equipment. And I can bring those back and show you the exact pieces at the point. We're right now, the parks guys have been great, we're right now still moving a couple pieces around and determining which ones to buy, but we'll come back with that. But that, you're, that's a good point and yes, the playable art park was meant to be playable art, it is all playable, but it's not as playable as a traditional, like the swing, the swing set is, there's some things, but, and the dragon, but some of them not as much.
And then my last question is, how are we going, are you going to bring us, like, I know when you did the outdoor sculptures, you put 10 out for a year and then we decided, how are we going to decide which pieces we're going to put? Are you going to go as like a?
That process is in the future. They, people probably won't deliver a painting and have it hang here for a year and then go back out like a sculpture. So we think it will be more competitions in which, it'll look more like the Veterans Memorial Process where we have a competition, then we commission a piece.
Okay. And then I really do like the representative images, I'm good with that.
Oh, the, the ones we're changing too.
Right, yeah, I really like this. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. DeGiulio, welcome back.
Well, thank you, thank you, it's good to be back. Sheri, when we did, when, when, I see Jan sitting back there and of course, I remember when she did and she led the project for the, for the turtles and of course, that was a real highlight back in the days before we were a city. And I, and I remember I was doing the auction at the Red Baron for the actual turtles. But I also know that Gail and I occasionally eat Sunday morning brunch over at Jay Christopher's and it's a shame because that was a beautiful, beautiful turtle with Marilyn on it. And, you know, there's some, some of them, even I bought one, it was, it was outdoor for many years and, and there's some by the library, et cetera, that have been outdoor for many years. Are, are we going to do anything to encourage people because I don't, I don't, I have no idea how you'd even go ahead and refurbish these things, but it'd be a shame to lose these things because they're part of Sandy Springs history that, as I say, go back to, when did we do the auction, Jan? Was it in '04 or '05? I think it was '04. Yeah, we did the auction in '04 and it would be a shame to lose that part of our history and to have things continue to deteriorate. So has there been any type of a, of a ongoing effort with the people who've bought them to go ahead and rehabilitate it and find people who can do, because you know, you can give me all the money in the world, I couldn't, I couldn't paint a turtle, I had the faintest idea what to do there. But there are people out there, of course, who know how to rehabilitate this type of stuff, it would be a shame to lose it. And that was my first point. My second point is, you've known me for a lot of years, you know how cheap I am.
I know.
And, and, and as I always say, that Eva and Tibby were the two cheapest people in Sandy Springs, but one of the ideas that came to me, and when we go to different places, we see some of the pictures of old Sandy Springs. We had a bunch of them at the William Paint House, which unfortunately has gone out. Have, have you considered maybe taking either some of the hallways or some of the conference rooms and doing photo galleries of the old pictures of Sandy Springs because even though we're only 20 years old, we've got pictures in this town that go back basically 100 years. And I hate to, I'd hate to see us lose that history and that reference on there. Have, have we, and not only that, it's very inexpensive to do that because the people who have those pictures would be happy for us to either copy them or take them or whatever, et cetera. And I was just wondering if we've done any work on that because I think that would be real important in celebrating our history.
I think that's a very good idea. That's the kind of idea we want to work with you on once we get, in other words, if the money's not in the budget, there's not a program, we're not working on it, but that would be part of it. Maybe we pick one of the conference rooms and make it a room about Sandy Springs history. One of the things, it wouldn't be the photographs, but one of the things we've talked about with a couple of the artists is if they do a mural- if they do a mural or a very large painting or something at City Hall Feature Wall, does it include pieces of history? Is it a collage artist who does that, and it includes historical pictures? And a B for Rusty and a flying pig for Eva. And so there are all these ideas. We just want you guys to say, "We're going to do the program," and then we'll get creative and work with you. But I could definitely personally see a room dedicated to historical photographs. To the first picture, I mean, to the first question, we have done... We and society have both done some refurbishing of the turtles. And some of them are a touch-up, but some of them, unfortunately, it's got to be stripped and started over. So, you know, maybe we should all get together and talk about a GoFundMe or some way to do a, you know, to get some cash in hand for refurbishment. Good thoughts.
Yeah, I was walking down to the post office today to make my annual sacrifice to the federal gods.
Yeah.
And stopped and watched, looked at Marilyn. I agree, she's not in really good shape right now, so.
Is it terribly expensive to redo those?
Do you know what?
About $2,500.
About $2,500?
To really redo it. Maybe not completely repaint the image, but to touch it up in a way that brings it back to almost new. And there's an artist called Chris Wachwach, right? That society has been working with, and he is able to do these, and he's working on the library ones right now. How many do we have out there?
How many are there out there?
How many are there?
Laura?
Oh, Laura!
I've been looking for you.
Hi, it's you!
Where'd you go?
Hi!
How many are there? You told me it's not that much.
Sherry, I need you to talk into the microphone.
Laura, how many turtles are there?
Well, there were 75 turtles. How many are on public display right now and not in front of the house? What is the question?
I think they're trying to get their arms around... $2,500 times how many turtles need to be refurbished? About 30 in the out-of-doors? In the public realm. I shouldn't just say out-of-doors. About 30 in the public realm. And not all of them, you know, need work. But we're talking probably $25,000 to $50,000 to fully refurbish the collection of turtles.
Ms. Mueller.
So Sherry, I had a question about the financials. So I think that what you showed was with the amount that was carried forward, if you were to receive what you had had in the past, it would be $85,000. But I think from... For the main art sculpture or whatever would go on the big wall out here in the lobby, it was, I think the one was up to $150,000, the other one was like $75,000 to $220,000. So if you were to get that $85,000, how would that fit in? Because that's kind of on the low end for what you had shown here.
Right. Well, there were actually some very promising things on the low end. For instance, if you do a wall sculpture, it's got to hang. We have to open that wall up and put structure behind that wall or stand it on the ground or hang it from the ceiling. A mural goes right on the sheet rock. You're paying for the guy's, the woman or man's talent. So, and those are beautiful. And I don't mean a street art mural with a rainbow and a happy face. I mean, Michelangelo did murals, and Caravaggio did murals, and Grant Wood, and...
So did Banksy.
So did Banksy, yeah. So a fine art mural would be gorgeous and in the bottom end of that range. However, I'm glad you asked that, because up to you. But when this new budget year starts, we'll be 13 months from the next $60,000. So y'all might make the decision to take the $25,000 and this coming year's $60,000 and the next year's $60,000, and we could install the piece in July of the... You know, whatever that is, 14 months from now, I can't count months. You might make that choice. For instance, somebody who I can't mention, but his first name starts with an S and his last name starts with a P, and he was the $220,000 at the top of the game. But we don't have to do that. So it's kind of figuring it out. Personally, I would... We'll work with you to get into pricing, but I wouldn't be surprised if y'all look and say, "We want to do one in July of 15 months from now and use all the aggregated dollars and, you know, spend them over time." Y'all know we have to do the contest expenses, competition expenses, and then the stipends and the pay-the-guys progress payments and that sort of thing. So that would be something you could do. But if we get into it, well, y'all might want to all work as a committee of the whole, or you might want to appoint a couple of people to be on the committee to work with us on it. There wasn't an official committee, but these gentlemen were very involved in, as we move forward on veterans.
And like Councilwoman Rochelle, I'm also fine with moving away from the hard abstract.
I thought y'all would be. I was like, "What?" Dr. Kelly, do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Paulson.
Let me get this... There we go. As always, Sherry, entertaining, okay? I love the world you live in, and every once in a while I get exposed to it. It's fantastic.
Why, thank you.
A couple of observations. I think the turtle walk out here, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, it is.
So I'm a big fan of that. I'm not quite as much of a fan of spending $2,500 times 30 sculptures to rehab them. Need to think that one through a little more, okay? By the way, there's a sculpture in front of the police headquarters, which as of next week is no longer going to be the police headquarters. Are you taking that home, Craig? Or any idea what's going to happen to that turtle in front of the police headquarters? Okay. So, but there's just one to think of. But anyway, I like the turtles walk idea. I think that's really cool, and I'm sure you guys will pick the best 10, and we'll go from there. It occurs to me that we can change artists every six weeks, and a new artist comes in, and different kinds of art and stuff like that. We're talking about more permanent decisions here.
Yes.
And things like murals on walls, you do that once, right?
Right.
So I suggest we not rush into doing that, okay? And I think there's going to have to be a process whereby we and the community talks about, what do we like? Because I promise you, there's seven of us, and nobody's thinking alike here, okay? So we all have our personal favorites. So how do we triage it to get to some kind of consensus? And like the Veterans Committee, we've met a bunch of different times, and you guys brought a bunch of stuff to us.
Right.
Which we've wound up shortlisting. So I think that's a good idea. We need to start figuring out what that process looks like.
Yes.
And then finally, you said something I thought was interesting, that there are people who would donate their art.
Yes.
To the city. And that's an interesting observation. I wonder if one of the first things we do is we daylight this whole concept and go to the community and ask the community, is anybody interested in donating a piece? And let's just see what happens, okay?
Well, the Gifts for the City has been in place, and we haven't been real aggressive about that. But we have talked with this, the City Communications Department, and we have talked about getting it mounted in City Communications. We would communicate it, but also putting a little speakers group together to go meet with garden clubs and Rotary and people of that nature and say, you know, the city can give you a tax receipt for the gift, and tell them about the program and ask them to participate. And also, the working artists around Sandy Springs, they may choose to just paint a piece because they want to, and we work with them a lot. So we would be active on that. But I think they need to go in tandem. And I think the city putting its shoulder to the wheel on the curated, procured pieces and us concurrently out there passing the word about retired art or art created for this purpose.
So, anyway, those are my thoughts. Both of those paths are fine with me. I just want to take some time before we go decide on something permanent. That's...
No, I agree. And I think it'll feel like how we work together on Veterans Memorial.
Okay.
I really do.
Mr. Baumann.
So, thank you, Sherry, Jan, Laura, everybody. The work you do enriches the city. Big fan of public art. But this is an area where it really calls for PPP, public-private partnerships. The city can be a stakeholder, a plant seeds, but we really have to work with the community, as we have been doing.
Yes.
For these projects. My interest in public art increases the more public it is. So, you know, the lobby here, I've been adamant that we can do the wall, but that that be a rotating place for art, that we need to be seeing student art, local art, and displaying all sorts of community art, inclusive, diverse, all of those things, and that needs to be rotating. As to the conference-level floor, if we can be convinced it's public, and I know we've done that. I think the issue with sculptures was there was a certain sameness, and they were coming along. You know, and I've been involved with real estate transactions for a long time. You acquire art for sometimes you build an office or an apartment complex or condos, and there was a certain sameness. My interest is in the projects that are throughout the city. You know, we'll go through the budget. I'm supportive of this. I'm supportive when we can take these dollars and leverage private dollars to match or other ways. But we have a roundabout that was built at Northside Drive and Old Powers in Riverview. I was at a large neighborhood meeting over the weekend, and they are in favor of something in that circle, if we can do it safely. So we need to spread the art around the city so it can be enjoyed throughout the city. But I really just want to commend you and Sandy Springs Society for the work that you do in delivering art and contributions and really enriching this community. Can I ask you one question quickly? What's the status of the Art Center? I think that's been sort of the trailers removed there, and where are we on that? What's going on?
We are wondering that ourselves.
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of been moved there, it's sort of...
I think the project had a little hiccup.
Did it hit a pause button or something, or...
No, it did not hit a pause. We had a couple of issues with contractors, and we'll be bringing that back to y'all the second meeting in May for additional conversation.
So when was that supposed to have been done, originally?
It should have been completed by the end of June, but we had some issues, which we'll bring back in.
Oh, yeah, definitely report. I've had questions about that, because I agree, the economic viability requires more classrooms. So, and I like the turtle thing. I don't think the city should be restoring private turtles. I just, I'm opposed to that.
No, I think I...
I mean, I was brought up, I don't think that's... I didn't think I heard you say that.
No, I think if the city wants to reach the ones that you own, yes.
That's a different issue.
And then if there was a sort of a group ask of people to donate into, like I said, GoFundMe.
But I do support the city having a stake in public art. I was part of the Public Works Program. I do think we need with these projects to embed the infrastructure, have a plan. I think we have to really look at the budget, but there is some... There is a policy that can be discussed, because we already did, about including in some of our budgets some allocation towards the public aesthetic of it. But we have a lot of things going on in the city right now, as it relates to projects, traffic calming. We've got inflation, public... So this is a great presentation for us to then take next month into the budget discussions. But my interest in this is high, but it lowers the more insular it is. It increases, for me, the more it's out in the city for all to see. I am much less interested about, I'm just being very candid, with the third floor of this building, beyond things that would be donated. I mean, we have beautiful photos of Ed Roland and Foster Sutton in our performing arts area. I don't know if it costs anything other than the picture and the production of it. So let's be really, really creative in how we outfit these less public areas and utilize our very precious tax dollars for the areas where we get the biggest impact. And I believe it needs to be around the city. We've done so much here at City Hall. I'd like to see it go around the city.
Very good comments. I will say that we've talked a lot about the smaller program. The big opportunity for Sandy Springs to be on the map of public art is these capital projects and making sure that when they're started, we are making room in the budget. If there are tall walls, there can be murals. If there are, if you're walking down a path, there can be platforms for art, for a sculpture to come. There can be mosaics, there can be interesting benches. And that's where you'll really see big impact, embedded in capital budgets, rather than reaching into the operating budget to do it. So we're real focused on kicking that off in a big way. And you mentioned when we chatted about it that some of these are T-Sloss projects and not sure if they were included. We need to get... We follow... We work for Kristen. And we'll sit down with your blessing and begin to get into what the opportunities might be there.
And Sherry, I want to live in your world. I feel like at times I do live in your world. You're in my district. So thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you all do and for all of you. Thank you.
Appreciate it, much appreciate it. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Well, thanks for the presentation. I think that you all know that the arts were a very important part of my life, and I still want to make sure that we have the opportunity to incorporate art into all of our public spaces wherever we possibly can do it. And I think, you know, the genesis of our sculpture program was when we went to Israel and saw that white, beautiful white Jerusalem stone carved, and communities were having sculpture contests. And I thought, "Well, we need to do something like that around here." So it's... We've made a lot of progress over the last few years, and we're just glad and thankful for all the work and all the thinking that has gone into this. And I'm looking forward to the resurrection of the turtles.
Thank you. And thank you for inviting me back up to the podium. I forgot to say one thing. There have been some comments about sameness of the pieces. When the program was conceived, the platforms were put, the bases were put around City Springs, and they're under trees. And so we were directed that the pieces had to be no taller than X, no bigger than X, which I don't think they look alike. I don't think Optimus Ko looks anything like Minko, looks anything like... He always carries it with him. But they are all of that modest scale, because they have to fit under the trees. So let's do some big stuff, okay?
Well, we did it across the street.
We did it, yes. Let's do some more.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to the next item, which is the SWOT analysis from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we bring back for your review and discussion a recap of the SWOT analysis that was conducted during the council retreat back in February of this year. So Caroline, thank you. You all will recall, the last activity that happened during our council retreat was for council to do a SWOT analysis to assess the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that are facing the city over the next few years. During that time, council was given five Post-it notes for each of the areas that you see here on the table. And then you were given five votes, five little sticky dots, that you could then go back and vote for the items. On the Post-it notes, each of you were asked to write down what did you believe were five strengths of the city, five weaknesses of the city, five opportunities, five threats. And then with the corresponding votes, the dots, you were then asked to go back around and place your dots on which items were your priorities. You could vote for your item, you could vote for an item that someone else had written out. However, if you voted for your item, then that still counted as one vote so that we didn't skew the rankings that we're going to talk about in two slides. Caroline, if you would go to the next slide. Oh, go back one. Oh. Okay. So the next slide that we have here is just a picture of a couple of the flip charts that council had completed. So we have the opportunities and we have the threats here. Here it is. There we go. We didn't put pictures of all of them. These flip charts are upstairs in Caroline's office, if any of you want to come back and look at them. But what we started out reviewing as we went through all of these was trying to collate these into some semblance, because there were a lot of common themes that we're going through here. So if you go to the next slide, please, Caroline. What you see here are the strengths as they were determined. And for the ease of discussion and for operationally working them into our work plan that will be part of the budget, that we have our first budget workshop at the next council meeting on May 6th. Our strengths, as identified by mayor and council, were staff. And you see underneath what we clarified to mean as staff included staff stability, best-in-class first responders, employees and police and fire, professional staff and city management, strong financial management and staff... Excuse me, strong management and staff and city management. That became the first one, staff, which everyone agreed on. So that received a score of one. And to determine what the score was, for the sake of ranking, so to speak, we took N, where N meant the number of times that it was voted for, and divided that by seven. So that's how you get a one. On financial management, that was conservative financial planning and management, fiscal responsibility, financial resources to support city priorities, financial resources and resource management, and financially healthy. Next was public safety as a strength, public safety and great public safety staff, which is also a similar theme as staff, which was our number-one strength, as identified. is also a similar theme as staff, which was our number one strength as identified. And then the fourth, business community and local economy, which includes business community and nonprofit organizations, strength of our local economy, and economic environment. The other items that you see below didn't correlate easily with what clearly came forward as the top four under strengths, but they included elected officials, location, neighborhoods, a healthcare hub, engaged population, established processes, our two major facilities being new and transformative, Performing Arts Center and City Green, plans for the future, varied tax base, seen as the leading city or a leading city in the region and state, our culture, and our wonderfully supportive citizenry. Next?
Eden.
Yes, sir.
So this is for public consumption, and I appreciate that, but it's really important in the details. Like you just said, staff and public safety were overlapping, and one through six plus M represents the districts and the mayor.
Correct.
I just want to speak for myself. I think I said best-in-class first responders. So, I mean, the idea that public safety, I'm not, everybody had our own issues, but public safety is a strength and it's our greatest strength. So I'm just concerned, I mean, when I saw this, so much of it was looped together and then it's tied to individuals because there was a lot of subjectivity in how you grouped the categories and how you put it together. And this was the first SWOT analysis that I've done in this form. So I think we have to take this, the themes are valuable, but I would caution people to look at this and not draw, I mean, individual conclusions. I will tell you, I was the one who, you know, just sort of thinking grand, put, let's, an opportunity, let's get an NHL team. But I'm just, I'm going to be concerned as this goes on where I think I saw in the agenda memo, you said to the effect, this is going to guide our work plan, and I would take issue with that. What should guide our work plan is the retreat and the substantive conversation. There were aspects, you've already said something tonight, like, for example, we weren't told that our votes on our own ones weren't going to be counted. So, I mean, I would take this with a grain of salt. I don't know who else has never done these. I had never done a SWOT analysis, and it was at the end of the, in the day. So I'm very excited to see this, but there was a lot of subjectivity in how this got put together, and this is not science right here as far as I can tell.
I was just about to say it's not meant to be a scientific analysis.
Well, but I just want to make very clear, and I have, that, I mean, I'm looking at this thing, and staff and public safety are at the top of my list. So, I mean, I don't know how that plays into that, but best-in-class first responders is staff. So I'm just, I don't want to get calls later on, you don't value public safety, too valuable safety.
I don't think anyone would say that. Again, this is...
Well, I think you could, I think you could look at it. So I'm just making clear for the record...
Sure.
That that's the top of my list.
Okay.
I also want to say that I agree, and I called you earlier because I had never done one of these, and I had no idea that this was going to be this big project that we were doing. I thought we were just putting stickies, and for instance, you talk about the financial management. I mean, of course, I think that we manage the city very well, and it bothers me that I'm not on there.
This is a joke.
So, yeah.
This is great, but you know when I first saw this? Well, I first saw this at the retreat, took photos of it, was when it got put on the agenda, okay? And I think you need to go back to how you got from what we did to how you got to this. But I take issue with this. I want the themes, and I took issue with the memo which said we were going to, where I thought it said we're going to guide our work plan from that. I don't know what you all have done, but we spent 13 hours in the retreat with discussions, and this was nice and dandy, and it was a first effort. This is being way overrepresented as I see it right now.
If you'll let me go through the slides, you'll see what we have as proposed work plan items, which I think everyone would be supportive of. They tie back to council's adopted priorities. The goal of this was to show that there is consistency in what is viewed as the strength. So...
You acknowledge the way that this is represented could lead to misunderstandings from people who really don't understand the process or what we went through to do it. I mean, this is so like data definitive.
I don't see it as being data definitive.
Okay.
I will acknowledge that, yes, as a first time, if you haven't done one before, that we could do a better job, and I think that we will revisit this to see what new themes may emerge from it at next year's council retreat.
Going to call, this was really well intended, and I enjoyed the process. We were laughing, we were having, you know, we were having fun looking at each other's items. But I just would caution the public to take this with a grain of salt, a little bit like when we had that great Georgia Tech consultant with the housing study that was represented as the best consultant we've ever seen, but she herself said, take it with a grain of salt. So I would just take this with a grain of salt. It's interesting, I'm glad we're doing it. But, you know, just seeing this first page, this comment may apply throughout, I just wanted to make that noted at the front end.
Sure. And as I just mentioned, this is not meant to be a scientific analysis. It was meant to capture what the conversation was during this exercise at the council retreat.
I don't either.
Well, let's go to the next slide where we talk about what those four themes were that rose to the top, which I think everyone agrees with as I've just heard from the conversation. City staff, our financial management, public safety, and business community and local economy are viewed by mayor and council as our strengths as a city. If we look at the next slide, our weaknesses, as they were identified, were redevelopment challenges, project length, traffic and congestion, lack of flexibility, and not tapping more of the extraordinary talent available to us in Sandy Springs, which is summarized on the next slide, Caroline. The opportunities that were identified through here were redevelopment, which was also seen as a weakness, and often there is overlap between opportunities and weaknesses. Opportunity also in the form of using more technology and increasing our efficiency, building the staff of tomorrow, and economic development. Let's go to the next slide, please. And then finally, the threats that were identified were housing and neighborhoods, financial, water reliability, and public apathy. And if we go to the last slide, we see the summary of that. The next slide are council's adopted priorities, which were adopted after the council retreat this year. Go to the next slide, please. And they were, are being used currently craft what we are working on for the FY26 First Budget Workshop, which again, as I mentioned, will be the next meeting, May 6th. The next slide are the proposed additional work plan. Sure.
What, can you explain what the March 2025 at the bottom is? What is that?
The work plan is part of what we work on as part of our budget to help fill in the items that you see that are being included as an enhancement or request in the budget.
No, but work plan, what does this mean? Work plan was created to fill, March 2025, were we involved with this?
No. This is totally a staff exercise to lead towards the budget document that you will get your first glance at.
Okay. So first one's council with staff, second one, council, third one, council, but the last one, March 2025, that was entirely a staff...
It should be staff has drafted a work plan that is being used to develop the recommended budget that we'll be talking about in three weeks.
So to what extent was the SWOT analysis used in this item?
That's the next slide.
Oh, okay, it was at the bottom, all right.
Go to the next slide. In the strengths section, we are including recommendations to continue to provide the best in region compensation, meaning both benefits and pay, and enhance our employee engagement. We're also focused on our financial management. We are continuing our conservative budgeting practices. And public safety, we're continuing to invest resources and facilities to enhance the delivery of services. For weaknesses, we're looking at tools to be included to develop and encourage redevelopment of aging properties. We're also looking at streamlined processes where applicable and appropriate for project length to get things completed quickly. Opportunities, we're focused on technology and efficiency, having a centralized data platform to collect, analyze, and utilize our data so we can make the best and most informed decisions. Future leadership is focused on an internal mentorship program of our staff internally so that we can build the leaders within our organization to be future leaders within the city. And then economic development to continue to expand engagement with our business community. In terms of threats, to address a perception that we may have not involved or apathetic residents and community, we would expand our community engagement to strengthen our leadership academy, including adding youth programming and a program to recognize active community members. And on the housing, begin work on our tenure update to the comprehensive plan. So this is a preview of things that you are going to see as requested enhancements in the FY26 budget that both address the priorities and the things that rose up as part of the SWOT analysis to be addressed or to continue to strengthen. I'm happy to answer any other questions council may have.
Any questions? Ms. Mueller.
So, thank you, Eden. I think it's a, it was, I think, a bold first step to do something like this. I don't know that council's ever gone through something like this. I do think, and there were some housekeeping things, I think, that could have been, and when you start anything, that could have maybe been explained and done a little differently, I don't know how much of that would have changed the outcome. I think that what is here, I think, is directionally correct. Most of the things are, we're continuing, we're going to enhance. There's some things, maybe when we get through the budget, we'll go back and take some step backs, but I think in general, it's directionally correct, and I think it's a learning experience. Next time, it will go a little differently, and I know that you'll, you'll work on that with staff. But just some observations that I had when I went through this information, there were two shared items that were between the weaknesses and the opportunities, and they were really focusing on redevelopment and economic development. So I think in the first 20 years, we focused on getting control of our land uses, getting rid of the Wild, Wild West that occurred with Fulton County, building and starting the activization of the city center, beginning to replace our much-needed public safety facilities. We've had good success with that with fire stations and the most recent, the weekend with the police and municipal court headquarters. We've also done a lot to invest in the community through the T-SLOSS programs, the capital programs, and providing customer service to our residents. I think that what this exercise shows is that we're kind of ready to look at the redevelopment and the overall economic development. I mean, I know Chris Burnett's on board, but now it's time to see what else can we do to help accelerate those efforts? And do we have the right incentive tools in place and partnerships to do that? So I think that, you know, there's things like that we talked about last year with the very small facade grant program, can we do something like that? Or there are bigger, bolder things. I'm by no means an expert in that, but hopefully if we put our collective heads together, we can figure that out. City staff continues to be a very high, very high focus. We want to attract the best, we want to keep the best, we want to keep them well-trained, and we want to provide them with the technology and tools to do their job and serve the residents. So I think that also came out. The one thing that I was a little surprised about was the public apathy, because I don't know, District 3, the folks in District 3 generally are not apathetic. So, and I know that the mayor can chuckle about that because he sat in this seat at one time, and Mr. Burnett also sat in this seat. So just, I just want to make sure that we're careful in how we address that because I think there's three different types of audiences. You have people who are apathetic, as we captured here. You have people that are uninterested, and you have people that are disinterested. And those are different segments of the population, and there's different strategies that you use to get those people on board. So I would just say that I would caution that we just don't focus on those that are apathetic, right? That are just, they're, those are the people that are, feel disengaged, disenfranchised, they're indifferent. From those people who are uninterested, that they just lack engagement or any enthusiasm. From those that are disinterested, just because they're more neutral and biased, it doesn't hit home to them. I think that anyone who's ever been to one of our public information meetings knows that somebody, when it's outside your front door, you're going to show up because you feel threatened or you're concerned. And then those, once those, those concerns and those threats have been reduced or removed, people go back into the other categories. So I think that it's, we have to just make sure that we focus on addressing all of them in whatever actions we take. So we don't have to get into that right now, but I think that apathy is sort of surprising. I'm not saying we don't have it, but I think we also have some different types of segments we need to address. So I'll stop there.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I've been through a bunch of these in my business career, and there are a couple of observations that come to mind. These are, these tend to be subjective, but what happens is there's an adage that when you're successful, you tend to party, and when you fail, you tend to ponder. So I look at this from the point of view of, we have great successes, the police station opening this weekend was a great success, that was a lot of fun. In terms of pondering, I focus on two things. One, are we reaching out to the community effectively, helping them? And then, and we got to talk further about that, and you've hit some of these here, and I want to expand that, but just make sure we continue to be a communicative organization. And then internally, we have some great staff here, and you talk about great staff. I want to make sure our staff feels rewarded and encouraged to, to contribute, to participate, to grow, and be effective. So when I look at this, I think of the, the opportunities, what are the external opportunities so that we're better serving our community? And internally, what are the opportunities to make sure our staff are, number one, well-regarded, well-rewarded, and well-compensated? And that's, those are the two things I get out of this. And let's continue to develop this and come through with specific work plans that you guys are going to recommend, and we probably have some as well as we talk further, there might be other things that come out. But those are the two areas that, to me, we need to continue to focus and grow, for what it's worth.
Yeah, hold on, let me speak because you've already spoken. All right, no, it's just, we're trying to do it in order. Yep. Okay, we'll get back to you. Everybody gets two shots. I want to address kind of the apathy thing. I think that a lot of the, well, first of all, these things tend to be what is on your mind at the time you do them. And so it's really kind of top-of-mind reaction to whatever's going on in your environment at that time. I think the apathy is probably too strong a word. When we started this city, the, because we didn't have a government, we saw representation of it tonight, representatives of society. We had Art Sandy Springs, we had Sandy Springs Revitalization, we had Heritage Sandy Springs. We had a lot of different community groups that were kind of quasi-governmental entities that did a lot of things that government normally would do that the citizens had to do for themselves. Over the last 20 years, there's been more and more reliance on the city to do a lot of the things that were needed, that were expected to be done, and we've lost a little bit of that community engagement from a volunteer point of view. And I think that's kind of what we're trying to get at there. It's not so much apathy, it's kind of a shift in focus from, away from, we've got to do this because there's no other option to, well, now we have an option for the city. So it's more about losing that sense of community engagement that was necessary in the pre-municipalization. I think, Tibby, you're nodding, John went through this, and we've lost some of that. And that, that loss is, yeah, they're happy, but the thing, but what was, what has been lost is that sense of community engagement.
They have been engaged because we, because we didn't have a government.
Right.
We used to refer to them as shadow governments.
Shadow government.
Because we didn't have a government.
Right.
But once we got the government and people saw how it was functioning, they've been extremely happy. I mean, it's, anytime I talk to people about Sandy Springs and the history of Sandy Springs, et cetera, the remarks that come up is just how, how happy people are with the way it turned out. It turned out better than anybody hoped it could.
And I agree with that, but I think the, the sense that was trying to be captured was the loss of those kind of institutions that were such an integral part of this community for so long. So I think that's kind of, I just want to clarify, I think that's kind of the sentiment that was, that was trying to be expressed. I think apathy is probably a little stronger word than what, at least I was intending. I wanted to make sure that, at least my, what I was thinking at top of mind was part of that. Now, Mr. Baumann.
So I do want to thank you, and I do think I agree with Melissa that directionally relevant, this just doesn't supplant the... relevant, this just doesn't supplant the 13 hours of the retreat that we had in the adopted priorities, so directionally relevant. On the issue of apathy, I would say this, I don't see our citizens as apathetic. I see the issue, actually, I couldn't agree more with what I think I heard in a sense. The engagement that I see is the problem from the city side with the citizens. We need to be out in the community, we need to be out, meeting people where they are. And so to that extent, if the community is apathetic, that's on us, and that's what I would say about that. But look forward to discussing these items in the budget.
Dr. Kelly.
Thank you. Um, thank you, thank you, Eden, for the presentation. I agree with a lot of, actually, what all of you have said. I, I agree, I want to just echo what Councilman Baumann said about the grain of salt, so public, please do that. But I also want to say some positive things about this exercise, because I want, I would like to see this become normalized and refined and tweaked and, and all that stuff. And when you're at the beginning of something, it's always a little, a little bumpy. What I appreciated about the exercise, what, is that it was one of the first times where I truly felt that our creativity was being stimulated synchronously. It was, I, I, I mean, flaws and all, I just enjoyed getting a peek inside of these brains up here. I did.
You mean us?
Yeah. Because I, I mean, and it, and it could be my, my fault, I just haven't been able to, to do that effectively in my years on council. So thank you for giving us that sort of opportunity with the sticky notes and all that. I have a quick question about the exercise, Eden. How many of the stickers did we have for each area?
You had five that you could write, each of your items, and then five stickies, the little dots.
Okay, so that's something I want to make sure the public is clear on. And in terms of our votes for priorities, we only had five that we could, what, was it five stickers, or?
Let's talk into the microphone, please.
Right.
I thought the total was five plus five dots, so each council person would have ten, a total of 10, but that wasn't quite explained in this session.
Yeah, right. So I'm just, I'm only saying that if there are places where you don't see checkmarks, it could have something to do with the fact that we did have a limited number of votes that we could place as well. So we, um, one of the, another positive to me was if you really go through, I mean, when you do your deep dive, Councilwoman Mueller, I want to give you a shout out for turning this into an Excel file, because I had some fun with that today. I, I wouldn't mind, well, anyway. So I, I want to say that it, it also reflects, like, how much variety there is in terms of ideas up here. I mean, we touched everything from, like, obvious public safety to, I think there was a sticker about power infrastructure. I can't remember exactly what it said, but there was one about above-ground power infrastructure. That was you, Andy? Yeah, that's something that, that's on my bucket list of issues, so it was fun to, to do that. About the work plan, to our, our decision around housing, or what your suggestion around housing, which is that we just sort of lump it in with the comprehensive plan, to me, I'll just offer this opinion, it isn't enough around housing. I don't want to see us kick the can down the road, I think is the terminology. And I think by lumping it in with all of the amazing things that we're going to talk about, for, you know, to guide us over the next decade, lumping it in there is just likely going to produce the same results we've gotten, which is, there's going to be a paragraph or two in, at the end of the comp plan that, you know, just copy and paste it from the next 10. I, I really would like us to see, to, to do more, I'd like to see us do more. I don't know what that takes, or what type of public, or political will there is around it, but that was one of my, I had quite a few takeaways, but that's the one takeaway I just want to express, I just want us to see more, yes, I'm sorry.
And I was just going to add, I did not mention it when I was speaking earlier, but we are also looking at including an update to the Housing Needs Assessment that was done in 2020, which has drastically, the world has changed, changed drastically since 2020. So we're looking at including that as a requested enhancement that you'll hear more about.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, we did talk about the update to the data. I'd like to see, you know, even that being said, I'd like to be, I'd, I'd like to believe that something tangibly more can come out of even our comprehensive planning exercise around housing, something more than just sticking it in as an area, the way we normally do, something like a strategic plan or a action plan. I hear all kinds of terminologies, different cities do different things, but that's where I am on housing. Let me look at my notes one more time. Okay, showcases, all right, all right, I'm done, thank you.
Ms. Rochelle.
I just have one question. Is this the start of us talking about a comprehensive plan? And can you tell me what the process is going forward with that?
So currently, we are including the kickoff of that in the FY26 budget. It will take us a, a good period of time, at least a year, to update the comp plan, but that would not officially kick off with actual meetings of the public information work until likely January. But we'll get you an update on what that timeline will be.
So who, who is involved with the comprehensive plan, and who picks those people that are going to be part of that?
So Mayor and Council would pick the, the steering group that would be part of that. On the staff side, Kristin will lead the effort for us again, as she did when it was done 10 years ago, but we'll be coming back to you with that.
So would it be this mayor and council, or will it be next mayor and council?
That's a, it would be the next mayor and council.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
All right.
This is good stuff. Just one, just one thing. So going back to the housing, when we talk about the next 10 plan and we go forward with that, will that also include not just updating the plans, but also talking about or engaging with private partnership, like, public-private partnerships or private organizations that, I don't know, grants do things? So that will, will that be part of it, also with the employers in Sandy Springs, will, and would that bring them into the fold, correct? Yes, you will see a very surprising price tag when we start talking about this in three weeks. Okay, thank you.
All right, we're going to end the work session and move on to regular order. I would like to call this meeting of the Sandy Springs City Council to order for Tuesday, April the 15th, 2025. Will the city clerk please call the roll and make the general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices at this time. Individuals who would like to provide a public comment at a city council meeting are required to complete and submit a public comment card in advance of the meetings. Public comment cards are available online and at the chamber entrance. Those providing public comment may be allotted up to three minutes to speak on their single chosen topic. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Rusty Paul.
Present.
Councilmember John Paulson. Councilmember Melody Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Melissa Mueller.
Here.
Councilmember Jody Rochelle. Councilmember Tibby Giulio. Councilmember Andy Baumann.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for its standing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, have we received any public comment cards?
Yes, we've received seven this evening.
All right.
So what I will do is call a couple of people at a time, if you would just please come forward to the podium in the order that I call your name. Also, as a reminder, if you would just please state your name and address for the record. First up is Alexander Sommer, followed by Kyle Bratcher.
You guys love putting me first. Alex Sommer, 1503 Tree Lodge Parkway, Sandy Springs, Georgia 30350. You guys gave me so much I want to talk about, but I just wanted to say, you guys all said that future leadership is an opportunity, so I'm taking that as an endorsement. So thank you for, for that. That's very sweet. So I just wanted to start out by informing you guys, since you voted on an ordinance without knowing definitions, the legal definition of soliciting requires a service in exchange for money, so political canvassing, religious pamphlets, educational materials do not fall under the legal definition of soliciting. So if there's a no soliciting sign, that does not prevent any of that at all. In fact, no trespassing only works if it's a gated community and nobody in that community has opted in to any email alerts or anything like that, that could have put them on a curated list to get a canvas email. But that's just a little housekeeping. Haven't really spoken about myself that much, but it's relevant today, so I thought I'd bring that up. I work on marketing mix modeling and marketing incrementality. My job is to create actionable recommendations for budget optimizations, literally showing clients how to move around parts of their budget to market better. Last meeting, the council denied $88,000 of additional funding for nonprofits serving underprivileged communities in the name of budget finality, less than a fraction of a percentage of those in, for those in need. Budgets are, will be, and always are just a framework. 95% will never be touched, and maybe 5% to 8% at most are used for flexibility. We threw around the word unprecedented a lot, city manager said it about a dozen times, because everything going on in Washington is unprecedented, and that's why we need to be able to create action. So when we don't move money around to help people in need, whether it's nonprofits, free lunch programs, security for houses of worship, which I was happy to be told we'd be discussing, but all I got was a how-to plan from the chief of police on how to harass a Jewish woman about whether or not we should arrest people for holding a flag. So maybe a better place for him would be, you know, a history or law class. But what I'm saying here is that budgets are not final. If you're not going to help people because of finality, that's not fiscal responsibility, that's a moral failing. You all said a weakness was a lack of flexibility. The only thing stopping you from being flexible is yourselves. Thank you.
Mr. Kyle Bratcher, followed by Deborah Gerard.
Hi there. My name is Kyle Bratcher. It's worth noting before I begin that I am not a resident of Sandy Springs, I live in Roswell, but I have spent a lot of time in this city. Me and my friends value the restaurants here, the shopping, the walkability, and over the past few years, we really found this place to be a second home. However, we do not feel that is any longer the case. Recently, this city passed a few ordinances that are unconstitutional and an assault on the ideals of the American people, laws that do not reflect freedom of speech or freedom of association, and we feel that by remaining in this city and expressing ourselves around others who we may not know, or who may find us to be hostile to their identity, that we are no longer safe, even just for expressing ourselves. It is my understanding that Sandy Springs had ordinances for covering public outbursts and indecency of behavior, and yet you have chosen to create laws that are not just stupid and ill-thought-out, but a violation of the principles that this country was founded on. To that end, we will no longer be spending any more time in the city as needed, and we will not be spending any more money or contributing to the city's financial well-being in any way. And we may be a small group, but I'm sure there are more like us. You spoke earlier of the Attorney General visiting your police department like it was an honor. A woman that speaks of deporting a U.S. citizen and sending him to a different country, denying him his due process, a woman who speaks of vandals as if they are terrorists, a woman who speaks against the American people, pathetic. You all should be ashamed of yourselves. You should be ashamed to have allowed these laws to have passed, and they are not minor, they are serious egregious violations of this country's values. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Ms. Deborah Gerard, followed by Bill Griffith.
My name is Deborah Gerard, and I live at 50 North Mill Road. I have a story for you. Late 2021, 7,000 Brandon Mill Road, adjacent to my home, was purchased and soon occupied by four, sometimes five, unrelated adults. The owner now resides in Tampa, Florida, an absentee landlord. April 2022, I made an inquiry with the city and was informed that the rental arrangement was in violation of zoning for our district. I've since learned that according to Section 731 Household Living, four unrelated individuals are, in fact, allowed to reside as tenants in our district. It's disappointing, and the code needs to be changed. Over the years, several code violation reports have been filed, some related to on-street parking, so let's talk about cars. Four tenants, four cars, one tenant with two cars, that makes five, two in the garage, two on the parking pad the owner installed with a curb cut without a permit, one wherever they choose to park, four tenants, four girlfriends or boyfriends overnight, that makes nine cars, parties, you see where this is going. On one occasion, 17 cars in our neighborhood. By the way, the homeowner states in his ads for renting the home that the house is located in a beautiful apartment community. It is not. The saga continues. 2023, police on site, domestic dispute, female tenant attacks male tenant, no charges filed, and we are assured by the homeowner that the perpetrator has been asked to move. In fact, it was the victim who moved out and the perpetrator remained. Fast forward to February of this year, police were on the property five times in as many weeks, ending with the arrest of the longest-term tenant, you guessed it, the perpetrator from 2023. Two felonies of aggravated assault and a temporary protective order that prohibits her return to the property as long as the alleged victim is a tenant. The alleged victim is under eviction notice with a hearing this week. The story, a soap opera now, and yet it is the reality we, as your citizens, are experiencing here in our supposedly quiet suburban neighborhood. Other than my home, in every home adjacent to 7,000, there are young families with young children. In close proximity, more families, more children. We invested in our homes, we invested in community, we expect neighbors who do the same, but this is not the neighbor at 7,000, nor is it the tenant, nor will it ever be. The code needs to change sooner than later. I submit into the record these documents signed by neighbors, albeit signed before we receive word that the current code allows this. Please change the code sooner than later. Thank you for listening, thank you for protecting our community.
Bill Griffith, followed by Theodore Davis.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I want to take another short detour from the backstory regarding speeding on Roberts Drive to comment on tonight's, quote, "resolution to adopt the Safety Action Plan and to set a goal and timeline," end quote. Regrettably, that plan includes the goal, quote, "to achieve zero fatal and serious injury crashes by 2050 on city-owned streets," end quote. As I said four weeks ago, quote, "25 years to achieve zero serious crashes, injuries on city-owned streets?" That's not good. Make that a goal for next year. How do you achieve such a goal? Maybe by cracking down on speeding on city-owned streets like Roberts Drive. Now, back to the aforementioned backstory. Six weeks ago, I quoted in April 2015, an email of mine to Mayor Paul and Councilman Paulson, in which I said, quote, "I suspect the flashing speed signs are..." Paulson, in which I said, quote, "I suspect the flashing speed signs are helpful," end quote. I then said, quote, "In light of more current information, I want to evaluate that last clause above. I'll compare the number of known-to-me accidents on the above referenced stretch of Roberts Drive prior to the installation of the signs with such accidents after said installation," end quote. I continued by saying, quote, "As explained in the addendum to this backstory, there were probably at least thirty accidents during the approximate twenty-six years prior to the installation of those signs. That's an average of about 1.15 accidents a year, and those are just the ones of which I am aware," end quote. Since then, I've described thirteen accidents on the previously referenced stretch of Roberts Drive that happened during the approximate fourteen and a half years after the installation of the signs. That's an average of about .9 accidents a year, and those are just the ones of which I am aware. So, comparing .9 accidents per year after the installation of the signs to 1.15 accidents prior to the year, uh, per year prior to said installation, a superficial conclusion might be that the flashing speed signs had a positive effect on the number of accidents on that stretch of road. But, when you consider that four of those accidents happened last year, it's easy to wonder whether those signs had any effect on reducing accidents on that stretch of road. It's also easy to recognize that we need more than flashing speed signs on Roberts Drive. By the way, two days ago, I saw some of the results of another accident on Roberts Drive, about 500 yards from my mailbox, broken vehicle parts scattered on the road. In November of '23, I contacted the SSPD regarding the speeding on Roberts Drive. The primary result was that the SSPD placed radar trailer in front of my house for two weeks, one week facing east and one week facing west. I'll discuss the results next time. Thank you.
Theodore Davis, followed by Courtney George.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Theodore Davis III, 272 Summer Drive. Whoops. Can you hear me a little bit better? Okay. Good evening. A few weeks ago, I had an opportunity to talk with Councilwoman Mueller about a number of different, a number of different topics, which was an excellent conversation overall. However, when our discussion turned to sidewalks, we were both curious whether study has been done to look at the conditions of our existing sidewalks, since the pavement conditions index exists, exists for roadways. Now, I'll admit I probably missed something, but I haven't really seen where one has occurred, and much of the discussion has seemed to be on adding new sidewalks, or when looking at existing ones, looking at widening them in relation to other projects. So, if such a sidewalk study doesn't exist, I'm asking for one to be considered in addition to what's contained in the action plan tonight. Now, Sandy Springs Works does have a procedure to report damaged sidewalks, by where it may not always be sufficient due to relying on the reports of others. For example, this past weekend, I filed a report about damaged sidewalks at the intersection of Morgan Falls and Roswell Roads, where it turned out they may have been damaged since July of 2024, according to Google Street View. And, even though the damage is visible from the Morgan Falls side of the intersection, um, according to the maintenance worker who inspected the damage and called me about my report, appears that it escaped reports until now, though the good news is that it's being addressed as soon as possible. Now, until this weekend, I'll admit that I was among many individuals passing by without noticing or reporting that damage, but if it escaped repairs due to lack of reports, how many other sidewalks have similar problems? Now, this isn't just a singular incident or concern neither, as multiple other residents I've talked to have also expressed similar concerns. For example, I've talked with Ms. Carilla Scully, a resident who in private conversation raised concerns around the city springs portion of Roswell Road. In particular, the areas around Trader Joe's and Dunkin' Donuts have been especially problematic for her, given that she relies on a mobility scooter to get around. And as longtime volunteer with Solidarity Sandy Springs, I know that some of our shoppers also rely heavily on our sidewalks for safe travel, to say nothing about the residents who voiced similar concerns captured in the action plan. Now, as Ms. Freeman pointed out last meeting, economic uncertainty will be a factor in the near future, so naturally, there's a question of whether a study should be taken, given those constraints. Not only would I argue yes because it concerns critical infrastructure, it should be taken because of that economic uncertainty, not just because it may lead to more people using those sidewalks, but also for the need for information that's as accurate as possible to make sure funds are used efficiently if a downturn does occur. Thank you very much.
Courtney George, followed by Amitav Nagrani.
Mayor and City Councilmen, I'm in front of you again, six weeks later. I do want to recognize, Councilman Bayer, you came out, and I appreciate that more than you now, but my neighborhood still has a problem. I now have enough bites for every one of y'all to come get one. Just come take it out of my water retention pond. The only progress my neighborhood has made is Officer Redk, when I called him and notified him of even more illegal dumping and living in our water retention pond. That's really very sad. I'm just going to be honest with y'all. I have so much, and we, as a community, are being stuck with this. We're not getting anywhere. The only information that I've gotten, and I realize that I have raised a flag by being here tonight, is that I now know that the gentleman who was arrested is a cross dresser and was released, and is now back living in my water retention pond. I don't know what to do. I can't fix it myself. But, for eleven homes, we've already paid out over $8,000. I'm having to already repaint homes that are six and a half years old because of the construction on 285. I put my house on the market. I can't afford this. I'd rather walk away from a 2.875 interest rate than have to continue to roll the dice. I need some help. I need you to put pressure and ask the police. The police have been great, but I need night detail because that's when they're going to get caught. And frankly, I need them not to get caught and then be released directly back to the streets. They just came right back. All their stuff was still there. They just brought more. So, we need your help, and I don't know what to do. I just was sick to my stomach watching somebody ask for $220,000 for a mule out here in the lobby. I wish that that was my biggest issue, and I know several of y'all expressed that. My biggest issue is that I have people illegally living in a water retention pond in this city, and we're not getting anywhere. I need your help. Tell me what to do.
Deputy Chief Chandler, can you meet with this lady? I mean, if she's got people living in a detention pond and that sort of thing. I mean, we've arrested them, but I guess we took them to Rice Street, and they got back out before we got out of town.
I couldn't even get, I called and asked, and I was told to contact the prosecutor. By the way, I don't know how to get in touch with the prosecutor.
I understand, but, I mean, can we get, get the case moved to our court with some charge? Okay, thank you.
I mean, the drug charge didn't stick him in either.
Well, let's, let's see what we can do with our police department and help figure it out. All right, next.
Mayor, Mayor Councilman, Mayor and Councilman members, my name is Amitav Nagrani. I'm a resident HOA, a board member of 5716 Taylor Way, and I echo Courtney's sentiment. We are a small community of eleven townhomes, and it's really a challenge to begin with all the rising cost to maintain our community. 285 construction project had resulted in we having to do a special assessment to take care of the exterior paint and pressure wash, which is going to cost our small community 25,000, over $25,000. In addition, we spent $8,000 last year of our reserves due to illegal encroachment and dumping in our detention pond, and we'll probably need to shell out another $8,000, so that's, you can do the math. The suspect was caught, released, and is back in our property. I am just tired. I don't know what to do. I'm assuming that the suspect was illegal in this country. I'm trying to be a good citizen, be of service to my community, but illegal immigration is making it very difficult. I am a legal immigrant and now a citizen. I moved to this country 20 years back for higher education to do my masters, went through an extremely broken immigration process to get an employer-based green card, and recently, couple of years back, I became a citizen. I feel our government is not doing enough to address this issue of immigration. I'm hoping the city of Sandy Springs can lead by example and address this issue, because right now, we are not getting the help. We are getting some, some help, thank you, but I'm requesting the city to help our small community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any others?
No.
All right, we'll close the public comment period. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. DeGiulio.
I move approval of the meeting agenda for Tuesday, April 15th, tax day 2025, with the addition of personnel added to the executive session.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. DeGiulio. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. DeGiulio, seconded by Mr. Paulson, that we approve the meeting agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. The question's on approval of the meeting agenda. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The meeting agenda is approved. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor Paul, I move that we approve the consent agenda for Tuesday, April 15th.
We have a motion by Ms. Rochelle. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion by Ms. Rochelle, seconded by Ms. Mueller, that we approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. The question's on the consent agenda. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Consent agenda is approved. Moving to public hearings, will the clerk please read the first item?
Agenda item 2025083, this consideration to transmit the annual capital improvements element to the Atlanta Regional Commission. This is presented by Planning and Zoning Manager, Michelle McIntosh Ross.
Ms. McIntosh Ross.
Yes, greetings, Mayor and City Council. Tonight is the public hearing and a request to approve a resolution that would authorize the city to transmit the draft capital improvement element, the CIE Annual Update, to the state and regional agencies for their review. The CIE Annual Update is a required element for cities that collect impact fees. It is a financial report of the collected and expenditures of the impact fee funds that are collected during the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. The CIE includes the capital, sorry, the impact fee project list of public improvement projects for each public facility category eligible for impact fees, and those are public safety, recreation and parks, and roads and bridges. And tonight, we have provided the draft documents prepared in accordance with the development impact fees compliance requirements, and staff recommends that demand City Council approved in resolution that would transmit the CIE report to the ERC and DCA for their review. That is my report.
All right, you've heard the report of the Planning and Zoning Manager. Have we received any public comments?
We have not.
All right, we'll close the public comment period. What's the desire of council?
Mayor Paul.
Dr. Kelly.
I move approval of agenda item 2025-083, approval of a resolution to submit the annual capital improvements element to the Atlanta Regional Commission.
We have a motion by Dr. Kelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Kelly, seconded by Mr. Paulson, that we transmit the annual capital improvement element to the Atlanta Regional Commission. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. The question's on approval of agenda item 2025083, transmitting the annual capital improvements element to the Atlanta Regional Commission. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The item is approved. Moving to new business, the clerk will please read the first item.
Agenda item 2025084, consideration to adopt the safety action plan and to set a goal and timeline to eliminate roadway fatalities and serious injuries in the city of Sandy Springs on city-owned streets as part of the Safe Streets and Roads for All's program. This is presented, I'm sorry, this is presented by Public Works Director Marty Martin.
Hi, Marty. Kristen, you're on.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, we have a couple things to look at related to the Sandy Springs Safety Action Plan. Staff has made a recommendation, recommendation that Mayor and Council approve our Safe Streets for Sandy Springs Action Plan, which also includes two safety targets to reduce fatal injury crashes. As you know, from a month ago, when we presented some final recommendations from the plan, we've been working on this project for a little over a year. We were awarded a grant through the United States Department of Transportation directly to Sandy Springs in January 2023 to prepare this action plan. And really, the focus of the plan is to eliminate, over time, fatal and serious injury crashes. And when we went through this planning process, you know, we looked at a lot of crashes, over 27,000 crashes. We delved down into the types of crashes, where they were occurring, are there patterns, are there crashes with certain types of age groups or certain types of behaviors? And one of the benefits of this plan is that we really look at all the factors that lead to crashes, whether it's somebody on foot, or somebody on a bike, somebody driving, or taking transit, or even commercial vehicle travel, and thinking about behavior, the environment, and all of us, and how we all interact in this environment. And so, we understand that getting to the zero fatal injuries and serious, or fatal crashes and serious injuries takes a collaborative effort across public works, across police, across fire, even community development in terms of implementing codes and access improvements with private developments. So, with that said, we recommend approval.
All right, you've heard the report of the Public Works Department. What's the desire of council? Ms. Rochelle.
I move that we approve agenda item 2025-084, a resolution to adopt the safety action plan and to set a goal and timeline to eliminate roadway fatalities and serious injuries in the city of Sandy Springs on city-owned streets.
Have a motion by Ms. Rochelle. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Rochelle, seconded by Dr. Kelly, that we approve agenda item 2025084, a resolution adopting the safety action plan and setting a goal and timeline to eliminate roadway fatalities and serious injuries in the city of Sandy Springs. Any discussion? Mr. Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Kristen. So, last time we talked about this, I asked about moving the 2050 deadline to 2040, because, as I said before, I'm not getting any younger. And this question about can we achieve this in 15 years instead of 25 years, this current plan that you have here still has 2050 as the year we're targeting this, not 2040?
It does. There's just a lot, I think, that the city needs to work on collaboratively, both through Public Works, and I said, you know, through all these other measures and means, so education and enforcement, trying to really focus on where these crashes are occurring. As you recall, we've done a number of planning studies over the last 20 years, including looking at one of the surface streets where we have some of the biggest challenges, which is Roswell Road, State Route 9, and knowing that unfortunately, some of our most serious and fatal crashes do occur on that corridor, but they have occurred other places as well. And so, when we can try to find one from an engineering standpoint, standpoint, projects that can address those, some of those projects can be costly, right? So, that takes time. And then, the behavioral changes that I think that all of us need to think about also take time, right? So, I, I don't know if all of you are like me. I was pretty excited to get my driver's permit at age 15. You know, now, my, my, my children weren't as exciting, and they waited a little longer. But, what I do know, that in, in our environment, we only do that process once, right? And that's one of the behavioral things that we need to think about, even as the transportation system has changed dramatically. I really, you know, unless I go and go read the driver's manual every year, you know, things change, and we don't really reteach ourselves. So, there's a lot of educational aspects of that as well. And so, we thought, kind of hitting that 2050, I know that's a long target, but we hope to achieve it, and there's just a long, a long road ahead to get there.
And I appreciate the explanation, same explanation you gave last time. Mayor, I think 25 years...
Mayor, I think 25 years is too long. 2050 is just too long. I don't know what the financial consequences of moving it to 2040, it's a goal anyway.
Right.
But I'd rather have the goal be 2014, we not hit it, rather than 10 years later. So, I will not support this unless this moves to 2040. And I don't know what the, totally what the implications are, but we have a smart staff, they can figure this out. So, I will not be supporting this unless it says 2040. I can make a motion to amend this motion, and second, so that we approve this with a target date of 2040. In fact, I'm going to do that. I'm going to move that we approve this motion, and we change the end date for the goal for zero crashes, crash to 2040 instead of 2050, and have staff come back and give us a plan based on that. So that's, that's a, we call it a superseded motion, or?
It'd be a substitute motion.
Substitute motion. So I'll have a substitute motion in front of everybody.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulson, seconded by Mr. DeGiulio, that we alter the plan to have an end date of 2040 rather than 2050. Any discussion on the amendment? Mr. DeGiulio.
Kristen, educate me, please.
Sure.
We're a city of 108,000. How realistic is it that we would get to a situation of no traffic accidents, no matter what the date is? How many cities of approximately all size, I'll say 100 to 150, actually have zero traffic incidents?
Well, I think there's a difference between traffic incidents, so a property damage, right, but what we're trying to-
Fatalities was the driver here, zero fatalities.
We're trying to get to zero fatal, and a serious injury crash, if you read the Atlanta Journal, a serious injury crash is one that changes your life, one that changes your life. I had the opportunity to actually speak to youth Sandy Springs a couple months back during this process, and brought to them an article that had just been in the Atlanta Journal Constitution about Matt Ryan's brother, who, when they were youth, they were going to go play a round of golf, and his, Matt Ryan's brother was driving, and he took a left and they were hit. And both of them at the time were pretty good athletes. Matt was able to overcome his injuries, and obviously, he played quarterback for the Atlanta Falcons, but his brother never could play football again, and he was playing competitive college football at that time. So that's what a serious injury is. And so-
We don't get me wrong, it's a good-
We're trying to get there.
I mean, it's a good thing for us to try and achieve.
Absolutely.
But realistically, how many cities in America actually achieve this?
Well, since, kind of this move to zero fatalities started overseas, and different transportation networks, different cultures, right? But have seen success with that, in that also in the United States, and we can certainly research that and bring that back, have had quite a bit of success in doing more of a deliberative approach, setting these goals for hitting zero. So if you don't hit any, you know, if you don't have any goals, you're never going to reach them, right? So, we always love our smart goals. So it really is a conscious effort to think about those crashes that change people's lives. And I doubt there's anyone here that hasn't known somebody personally whose life has been permanently changed by a car crash. I've had a couple family members myself, including a cousin, who was, anyway. So I just, I think that unless we can really focus our attention on those kind of behaviors, and the locations, and the kind of maybe design modifications that we want to make in addition to all those other factors that I have spoken of in terms of education and enforcement, emergency response, the city has made an enormous effort in that. So, post-crash care is actually one of these elements. So Sandy Springs, having invested a few years ago into emergency vehicle preemption, means our fire department and ambulance services are getting to crash scenes faster. And so, just even that intervention at a crash site with an injured individual may actually have less, you know, more chance of survival and less impacts. So there's, it's multifaceted.
Kristen, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
This is being done under federal grant, correct?
Correct.
What are the constraints of the federal grant that would affect this project by changing any of the dates in there? Is there any ramifications to that?
I think that with this grant, they would be delighted for us to actually choose an even sooner date to get to zero, actually, but we are supposed to try to get there.
Okay, okay.
Right.
I just want to make sure that there was nothing that we inadvertently would do. Mr. Bauman.
Thank you, Kristen. I'm struggling with this because the comment that's been made in public makes me wonder why, let me ask you this question. Why do we have to have a date? Do we have to have a date as part of this process? To the mayor's question about the constraints? Because I wonder, you know, 2050, okay, and now 2040, I bid 2039, and if I'm going to bid 2039, why not 2038? My question is, do we have to have a date? I mean, is it not, and then I have a second question on specifics. Could we not simply say the goal is zero fatalities? And then, I mean, it now becomes, public safety is an adopted priority, it's part and parcel of public safety. Do we have to have, that's the question. Do we have to have a date as part of this?
I believe the guidance was that we are, it is a smart goal, it is a specific goal by a time, right? And I think some other communities may have just set something, you know, we have in the agenda item that says, you know, based on our analysis, what this means related to Sandy Springs and the fatal crashes that have occurred here over this period, and kind of projecting in the future, is a, you know, little 0.6 reduction per year.
Okay, my, I guess my comments here are going to be, I'm going to stick to the germane to the amendment, Rusty.
Right.
So on the time, if the amendment were to get to zero deaths, or whatever the number is, if that were the amendment, what would be your response to that?
When-
Because I'm trying to wrestle with a random date.
Right, and we started this conversation a few months back, and even when we were looking at the opportunity to pursue a safety action plan, that's why we went on to start the conversation then, because this is a difficult conversation to set these targets for crash reduction related to serious injuries and fatalities, because we think that we cannot control those things. And certainly, there are some crashes that you go, I don't know how that occurred, it's extraordinary, right? But with that said-
This is aspirational, okay?
It is aspirational. And I think unless you can really set a target-
Well, but what happens is you're going to take the capital cost to do the projects, even though we know there's a chance there'll be a freak, I mean, there's a death, but you're going to take the capital projects that need to achieve this, and you're going to amortize it over the number of years. I mean, that's the practical impact of the year, right? So if we say 2015 years instead of, instead of 25 years, then presumably, it's going to be somewhere around 40% more expensive each year along the way, I have to do the math. But there's going to be some number of dollars more to spend project year by year by year to reach that aspirational goal. I'm just, I'm wondering, because they're not wrong, the goal is zero deaths next year, okay?
Right.
The question is, because these are somewhat optical, so I'm just wondering, like, we've got a staff recommendation for 2050.
Correct.
The ante's been upped here on this motion, which I'm wrestling with, you know, I want to go faster too, but if I were to make a superseding motion to remove any date, and just to say the goal is zero deaths-
Councilman, if I may?
Please.
So I just pulled up the information on this grant specific from the U.S. Department of Transportation to confirm whether or not they require that, and they do. So the leadership commitment and goal setting is required within the plan, and it does dictate that you shall set a target date for achieving zero roadway fatalities and serious injuries. So we do need to set a date with this point.
Do they say what date?
They don't say what date, they just say we have to have one.
Fair enough, thank you. I yield, Rusty.
All right, any others?
Just one final comment, Mayor.
All right.
I made the motion, but I haven't said a word, I'm waiting everybody to talk. So let's put staff on the hook to put a plan together that takes 15 years instead of 25 years. I know you're up to it. If there are financial consequences to this decision, bring it back, and if we can't do it, we'll adjust it. But at this point, I would rather the aspiration goal be shorter rather than longer, that's why I made the motion, that's why I support going to 2040, so enough said.
Let me ask one other technical question. By changing the date, you have to go back and redo how much of the report? Is it just changing the date? Is that all there is? You would change nothing else in there?
Right, no. No, it has to do with taking the recommendations from this, you know, folding them into our-
So it would not interfere with any deadlines that the city has to meet?
It would not.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Yeah, so far. Yep. Is there any other discussion? All right, the vote is on the amendment to change the 50 to the 2050 deadline, our target date, to 2040. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The amendment is adopted. Now we go to the full, to the main motion. Call the question on agenda item 2025-084.
Mayor Paul, can we have discussion on the overall plan? I mean, this, we've only just debated the amendment to change the date, we never really got into a substantive discussion about the plan itself.
Well, I've already called the question, and technically, no, but I will allow it to go ahead.
Well, just, courtesy of point of inquiry, as-
You can state it as a matter of parliamentary inquiry.
I'm just trying to get to the substance here.
Understand, understand.
Wav our Roberts rules. We, that's why I asked the question earlier, are we just voting on the amendment, which we did?
That's correct.
And then, because we had paused any discussion to delve into the date issue, and I, in fact, said during my comments, I'm just going to limit to the amendment.
Okay.
And I don't know if anybody else had comments about this, I mean, I have, so if we can have a discussion about the plan-
Proceed.
Okay, thank you. Kristen, is there anything in this plan, is there anything in this plan about city traffic calming policies, or anything in your mind? You're talking about surface roads and traffic calming policies, and the role, things like speed bumps, speed limits, radar, you know, all the things that we have in our traffic calming policy can do to achieve these goals. So does traffic calming have a role in it?
It certainly does. It's, we list a number of strategies as part of this, you know, in addition to projects. And so, lowering speeds is one of the ways one can achieve less injurious crashes, right? And so, there's this balance with traffic and transportation, and all of us working and traveling in the same network, right? Because we have people walking down Roswell Road, and we have people driving down Roswell Road, and we have bus service, and we have freight deliveries and everything going, it's a very complex system. And we all want to get to where we're going. And so, that conflict comes because we all want to get to where we're going, and then the safety side of that. And so, when we start to make improvements to try to minimize injuries, say for the most vulnerable people on, you know, in our system, which are people maybe on a bicycle, people getting off a MARTA bus, me walking, you walking, us going across the street to the Veterans Park or to Sandy Springs, you know, to go to the radio.
And it's interesting you mention the word vulnerable also, because our traffic calming policy is designed for petitions and for cost sharing. And I can only speak for myself and my 11 years on council, but from day one, I've had traffic calming all over District 6, and whether it's the Dudley neighborhood, Old Powers Ferry, Taratral, I mean, not Taratral, yeah, Taratral, London Berry, because we've been through it together. There is a consistent comment that I receive from people who go through this process or want to go through this process, and that is, it's just not user-friendly enough. And we have, in the past, said, you know, there's reasons, there's people that will stand on a corner, and Tibby likes to say, you could, you know, stand on a corner and give out $100 bills, and somebody will object, but boy, oh boy, does that, boy, oh boy, does that apply to speed humps, for example, right? Like, so we have this very high threshold for a neighborhood to get, for example, speed humps, or any other things, that was a 75% petition of all the impacted homes. It would seem incongruent to me, as a matter of public policy, that on the one hand, the council would adopt a zero goal of zero deaths, and not at the same time, take a good, hard look at its traffic calming policy, and also the amount of money that it would invest in traffic calming, which may be some of the most low-hanging fruit of this, and say, you know what, neighborhoods, some of you may not like this, but the city's public policy goal is zero deaths, and there are situations here where traffic calming is appropriate, and we're going to go ahead, I've asked this question for years, what is the threshold for which we say, forget what the neighborhoods want, we are going to impose it? And so, I would submit, this is a great opportunity in the upcoming budget year to take a good, hard look at traffic calming policy and numbers and amounts of money, and say, how do we make this more user-friendly? I could tell you, there would be cheers all throughout District 6 if we made our traffic calming policy more user-friendly, lowered the threshold, forget the cost share, and the cost share frankly is a problem for more vulnerable neighborhoods that just don't have the money. We heard from one here, if they had had that, so I'm going to cheer loud and hard if we adopt this tonight, and I'm going to say yes to the 40, understanding that the goal should be every year, frankly. But I'm going to also push real hard for traffic calming improvements and dollars in our budget, because that's where our priorities need to be.
Thank you.
Ms. Rochelle.
One of the things I've noticed recently is, on our roads, is that the striping is just, there are some roads that just have no striping, and I would think, I don't know if this is part of that, or if we, do we, what is our striping program?
So in terms of restriping roads, mostly, it's done with when we do our repaving, and then we have an annual maintenance budget to go in and refresh, say, worn striping on city streets. Now, most local neighborhood streets do not have edge line striping or center line striping, but, you know, Mount Vernon, Brandon Mill, you know, more traveled streets do have striping. And, you know, we actually have incorporated into that every three-year paving assessment, a striping assessment, and so we have received back from the same company that does that paving assessment, our striping assessment, and so we build our maintenance program on that.
I know we see the paving, but I don't think I've ever seen the striping. I'd be interested to see, and I know we should probably leave it up to some of our residents to let us know, but I have noticed that.
Right, we have, and we do create a program to do that maintenance, and then also address, you know, concerns brought to us by citizens, you know, crosswalks get worn out and things like that, adding turn arrows and such, but that is on the annual maintenance.
So is the striping on Roswell Road, is that us, or that's GDOT?
It is not, right. And so, when, the Georgia Department of Transportation, as you know, repaved portions of Roswell Road a couple years ago, they did the north section, and they did the south section, this section here, near City Springs, they haven't done. And we keep asking, when are you planning to maintain this? So we do, when we receive complaints, we do forward that onto the maintenance office. But I, you know, that's what we can do, because they are responsible for doing that work.
Thank you.
Any others? All right, we will move to the question, which is on the main motion as amended, a resolution to adopt the Safety Action Plan and set a goal and timeline to eliminate roadway fatalities and serious injuries in the city of Sandy Springs on city-owned streets. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The item is approved. The clerk will please read the next item.
Agenda item 2025-085, this is consideration to declare a surplus, certain property owned by the city and directing disposal of the same. This is presented by Captain Andrew Spears.
Captain Spears.
Mayor, council members, and the citizens of Sandy Springs, good evening, and thank you for your time tonight. This is a request for approval of a list of items that we've identified as surplus. With our move to our new building, we have identified quite a few, most of them are furniture-related, but there are a few other items on there. We find it best to list these items as surplus and go forward as such.
All right, you've heard the report of the captain. What's the desire of council?
Mayor Paul.
Mr. Paulson.
I move approval of agenda item 2025-085, resolution to declare a surplus, certain, declare as a surplus, a certain property owned by the city and directing disposal of same.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulson, is there a second? Motion by Mr. Paulson, seconded by Mr. DeGiulio, that we approve agenda item 2025-085, a resolution to declare as surplus, certain property owned by the city of Sandy Springs. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. The question's- The question's on Agenda Item 2025-085, a resolution to declare a surplus certain property owned by the city. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. The item is approved. Moving to reports, it's been a kind of busy week in the last couple of weeks in Sandy Springs. We had the open house and the Police Foundation open house of the new police headquarters this past week, Thursday, with the foundation members and prospective members and to the public on Saturday. And reaction's been very, very positive, mostly from the police department. They're excited to move in and be there a week from, I mean, Monday, right?
We're starting to move on Thursday, we'll be live on...
Be there on the, okay, on the 21st, so excited about that. Also, we had the Lantern Parade. Crowd was down a little bit, I think, over previous years, but still was a good event and look forward to it. We had our first, first City Green Live in a freezer. It was kind of chilly on Friday night, but it was a good crowd and everybody seemed to be enjoying it and had a great time. And then, of course, the farmer's market opened this past Saturday and will be going on through the remainder of the summer. So that's kind of it for me. Anybody else? All right, moving on to the financials. Ms. Carlyle.
Good evening. The, this is the review for your February 2025 unaudited financials. We are at 66.67% of the budget. For revenue, we have 87.94% and expenditures, we are at 58.15%. From January to February, we recognized $14 million increase in revenue primarily coming from Georgia Power Electric Franchise Tax as well as $2.9 billion in local option sales tax. The departmental budgets continue to trend as expected, as budgeted, and this concludes the review of the unaudited financials for February 2025.
All right, any questions of the chief financial officer about the financials? And Ms. Rochelle.
You know, we're talking about the Police Foundation. Do we get updates? How do we get updates about that?
The city manager will provide those on a regular basis.
We are going to have the executive director of the Police Foundation come and give an update. It is a standalone entity. They are no longer part of, they're affiliated with the city, but they are not part of any of our financial management. So I'll get with Tom and with Mr. Dan DeLucio on getting them here. Hopefully, probably the second meeting in May.
Any other questions? All right, is there a motion for an executive session for the purpose of real estate litigation and personnel?
Mayor Paul.
Mr. Paulson.
I move that we suspend regular order and move into executive session for the purposes of real estate litigation and personnel.
A motion by Mr. Paulson is your second. Motion by Mr. Paulson, secreted by Mr. DeGiulio, that we move into executive session for the purpose of real estate litigation and personnel. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. The question's on the executive session. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. We are in executive session. There'll be no further business conducted this evening. If, we will simply return to this room and reconvene into regular session and immediately adjourn.
...
I think I should probably tell you. That it is pretty ridiculous. So, really, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, gosh. Yeah, it's like we get around. It's kind of nice. I felt that we had that practice. We were going to have a session. And we were going to have some sort of conversation. If you don't expect to hear that. These are all stunning, frightening, pleasant experiences. And we can go out there. But they hope to hide them. But your services can't be hidden. You would be able to. And you're not too far from it. I would be very, very glad. You would love. Like, you know. Right. And that's kind of what we care about. Is there here? You know, and you're just like, no, I'm gonna stop calling you. And then that's great. We do have a show. Yeah, it's a little stream.
Well, how did it not?
Yeah, I'm hanging around. I'm starting at all times.
No. I was learning that. Now it's been a while. I'm supposed to be a friend of yours. And he's supporting on Friday. I was only in the towers. Right. Can you, can we just start with the common ground? No, no, no. I want to go right now. Excuse me. I want to go see the. I mean, I think that's a good idea. Obviously, we're in the. I mean, this is. It's not that those end of attention. No, no, the God is. I don't think the people can ever. No, what do they do? That's what's interesting. Or it's the people who live there. So, yeah. That's what you get. No, it's really good. So, what would be? Revolution. I don't know. Sure. Uh, actually. Ah. She. She's missing. Tough, tough to put the. HR. I'm in trouble. Oh, my God. He was like. That's not happening. Hey. Is it? And I quit. I could build something else. And so, he's like, I'm dead. And so, uh, it was. Um, can you just come up? He's not funny.
We can test these.
Yeah. Well, he's off to new things. Yes. He didn't have. He didn't shoot out. And, uh. Yeah. I, so, I mean, like, all the. Really, thanks for having me. Yeah. I mean, around here. I mean, I'm. That, like, but, like, happy desire. Yeah, people are like, they can't. They're not. I'm going to go to the. Um. I'm going to be a lot of conversation. I guess. I'm going to see now. I'm going to. That's cool. I'm going to say no more than. Oh, oh, I have. That was. Yeah. 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 I mean, I'm going to see. Whatever. The war. What do we have? We have. Who has? This is. And. And.
Somebody took my paperwork. Yeah, but it's not official until it's recorded.
Record of it.
It is, we have still electricity.
Wait, wait, whoa, whoa, whoa. They've taken our paperwork. We don't have any paperwork to finish this up with. Who has the paperwork? Who got it?
Where's our clerk? I'm sure she took it.
Well, she's not here and I don't have anything, so we can't record anything. I mean, we can't have an official record.
Paper you can use.
Well, we'll have to, but it's, it's... No, we got, we got to see, first we got to try and locate it.
What is the difference with your paper?
If, in the absence of the clerk, I've got the only official record.
Got the record.
They're not supposed to collect our paper while, while we're in session. I don't know who did.
She picked up the paper and went out the door, I saw her. You must have signed it, didn't you? You did, you signed it, didn't you?
Well, no, I signed, I signed, I signed the other stuff. I didn't sign the official. All right, hold on, let me get this... Yeah.
Want a piece of paper to write on?
Yeah. Okay, hold on, I gotta write this stuff. I gotta write the times down. Nine twenty-one. Paulson moves return to regular order. Seceded by DeGiulio. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call it a question. The question's on return to, uh, regular order. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. All right, we're in regular order. Mr. DeGiulio.
Move adjournment.
Mr. DeGiulio, move adjournment at nine twenty-two, seconded by Paulson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. We are adjourned.
We've never had this happen before.
No, never. Somebody was trying to do housekeeping and, uh...
Yeah.
But I am...
It wasn't at the time, just in the past hour.